All right, it's 1:30. It's time to call this special session to order. Today, we have two items to discussion. The first item is A, Discussion Resolution 2020-083 relating to recommending masks. And Item B will be Discussion of Financing of Upcoming Projects. So first item, discussing the resolution that was mentioned relating to recommending masks. Gentlemen, as you know, the governor had extended the mask requirement. And that was Resolution Number, was that 2141, Kelly?
The 2114 is the one that the governor did on April 1st to replace the one that was referenced in the city's Resolution 2020-083. But then shortly after that, the Legislative Coordinating Council revoked it.
Okay, so as far as the state is concerned now, that they are not bonded by the mask resolution?
Yeah, not according to that.
Not according to this.
Jeff, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioners, Commissioner Hayes and Commissioner Keflis, I want to hear your ideas and concerns on this.
I think that since the legislature didn't extend or they voided the governor's executive order, I think that we should go along with the same and rescind our resolution requiring or recommending masks.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Keflis. Commissioner Hayes?
As mentioned, our original resolution was based upon the state's action, the executive order by the governor. And now that it has been rescinded and not put in place, we have the option to rescind ours, certainly. So without compelling evidence to, you know, go against what the state's actions are, I would agree.
Then I'm in agreement also, so all three of us are...
I'll put that on the commission agenda for the 22nd to rescind it.
All right, that would be fine. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Commissioners. All right, moving to Item Number Two on the discussion list. Discussion of Financing of Upcoming Projects. Lacey, how are you this afternoon?
I am good.
Good to see you.
You too. Okay, so for this, I was planning on just a fairly informal discussion during this work session where we can kind of, we've got two different options of the direction we can go. I'd like to take you through this packet. Most of these documents you've seen before, but just to go over quickly what they are. The very back page is kind of a project listing and where I'm looking at in terms of what large projects need to be financed and where we need to, you know, spend some time today. But I've also asked Garth Herman with, oh, I'm forgetting. Where does he with? Kelly, help me out. Gilmore and Bell, to join us on the phone if you guys have any questions on, general questions on bond issuances, the process, what types of projects fall under this Charter Ordinance Number 11, those types of things. So we can go through the documents first, if you'd like, so that you get a general understanding of what's in front of us and kind of have some time to develop questions that you might have, and then call Garth. Or we can reverse that and call Garth, get the overview from him, and then go through the documents, whatever you all prefer.
I'd prefer that we go through them with Lacey first.
Okay.
I agree.
Yep.
Okay, excellent.
You're on.
Okay, so the first document in front of you is the Charter Ordinance Number 11. And my understanding is, you know, this ordinance sets what types of projects the city can bond without having to issue a public vote. So when I spoke with Garth previously, he said that the projects that we've got in front of us would be appropriate to issue bonds for under this Charter Ordinance Number 11. So additionally, the next item is just a memorandum that is from Gilmore and Bell on Charter Ordinance Number 11. So, you know, it goes through background of the legislature, goes into debt limitations is the second paragraph, which in general, that is saying that the city cannot issue debt, general obligation debt in excess of 30% of the assessed valuation of all taxable tangible property in the city. So that is the general rule, but of course, there's always exclusions to the general rule. So certain types of projects such as street, major street projects, highway projects, infrastructure projects, and I believe facility projects are all excluded under that rule. And we can go into this in more detail, but when I've looked through our bonds that we have outstanding currently, I believe all of them, with possibly the exception of the ADA bonds, are all excluded from that general obligation bond limitations. So I don't believe we have any that are in that 30% category. But we'll go over all of that when we go through the paperwork.
So is this retroactive for bonds that were secured prior to charter ordinance 11 then?
Um, I'm not sure. These were all, so this was in 2013, correct?
It seems like it.
I'm not sure if it would be applied to the 2012A or not. Because those are the only ones we have outstanding, and they're actually, they're due this year. So we'll be fully paid out on them.
Okay, good.
So it was just the ADA bond, and it matures this year?
Correct. There's, we, I believe that was the one we refinanced, correct? So the old portion that we did not refinance matures this year. And then we've got the Series 2019A that was that refinancing bond for ADA.
Well, what was that amount?
Um, on our schedule, so the next, the next item is this sheet on legal paper. And this is our current, our current bond and interest schedule. I kept 2020 on the list just so you could see what was paid last year. So the remaining balance is, you know, closer to 6 million, just under 6 million, instead of the 7 million '12. So our payments on the 2019 are, in 2021 is $20,000, and then the interest is the 42. And then it bumps up to the 275,000 and 41,000 in interest.
The 2015A Streets and Water Sewer?
Mm-hmm.
That's only out of the special use sales tax. That's not our, any of it's out of our low interest revolving loan?
No.
Okay.
Yes, all of these bonds are actually paid using either, we, for the last two years, I believe, and David, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have not levied any tax levy funds for bond and interest payments. They're all, since they're related to streets and ADA, those ones are all paid out of special use sales tax. The water sewer is paid out of the water sewer fund. And then we've got the infrastructure under the educational sales tax.
So... It's trying to get it straight. We're looking at a lot of projects in water sewer. But that, since it's paid directly from water sewer, those would be exempt?
Those are not bonds. That's a low interest revolving loan.
But as our debt, maximum debt consideration, since they're coming out of an industrial enterprise fund that's generating for paying those, then those would be excluded from our debt limit also?
This is a general obligation bond debt limitation. So it does not include the loan funds or anything like that.
Okay, two separate things. Okay, thank you.
Okay, just moving through the documents to give you an idea of what everything is. The next item is just the analysis prepared by Raymond James that you guys have seen previously. I believe this was in a commission packet, agenda packet in December. So I just included it again for your reference in case you wanted to look back at it today as we move through the discussion. And then finally, the last page is just kind of a breakdown of the projects that I think we need to be looking at today. So we've got three major street projects coming up. The Maple Street Cost Share has a city match of just over $1 million. The Maple Street from 17th to 10th is the mill and overlay that we've chosen to do, kind of as our current year mill and overlay project. But that, that cost is estimated just over $400,000. And then the Main from 10th to 8th, the city share of that project is $744,000. And then the US 75 to City Limits, this is just an overlay project. It's fairly small, but if we're looking to do it, we have the option of, if we want to include that in a bond as well. So I did include that in here. It's the one for $120,773. And then I added in just some miscellaneous funding in case we had other, you know, large projects that we wanted to do design for or something like that. If we want to include funding within this bond issuance for other major street renovations, we could do that. Just the language of the bond would need to allow us to pursue those design fees for street projects. The next section down is Quality of Life. So we have the Central Park Sports Complex on here. And then I added in, again, some miscellaneous quality of life, things like the Zoo Master Plan and any, if we have a street master plan, any master plan ideas or design work or, you know, things like that could go into that section. And those, those two items, I added that just to have the grand total of the $7 million for a proposed bond issuance number one.
That would include the city comprehensive plan being updated from, from what the last time was, 1980?
I would have to ask on that.
That, that's about $100,000 all on its own.
Yes, I, I, that's a question for Garth if that would qualify. I would think that it would, which would be a great project that we could include in this. So long as the life of that plan is about 20 years. Because I'm, I would suggest, these are kind of 20-year improvements, and so we would want to stick with 20-year projects in this bond issuance.
Well, the other one's almost 40 years old, so.
Just noting it. It's an important factor.
Well, we might want to check on the comprehensive city plan, though, is how often it should be so that we start a routine, we'll pay the $100,000. But then, is that something that needs to be evaluated every five or 10 years?
You probably need to, you probably wouldn't need to totally redo it.
No.
But just kind of review it. But I anticipate it would probably be a 20-year plan. But, and when we go out for specs on that, we can request that and then do periodic updates.
If we periodically update it, it seems like we could stay current and not have to have the big ticket of the $100,000. You know, if we're spending $10,000 or $20,000 even to update it every five years, we'd have a current working document that...
Yeah, after 20 years, you'd want to do a bigger review because they do those studies and things that are what costs a lot of the money is, the housing and traffic and all of that. And it probably would be expensive to redo those every five years. So that's probably what you would do every 20.
Yeah. Now, the traffic patterns, it's going to take a while for those to change.
Lot of it depends on a certain aspect of the community relocate, like schools or big box stores and things like that.
So something like that would be, would be doable within, in these numbers that I have in front of us. I intentionally added in some, some extra cushion for projects like that that we may want to add on into this issuance. You'll see on this page that I do have it broken out into two different bonds. The street projects and the Central Park Sports Complex are projects that are emerging quickly. You know, we've, we've got, I believe, July letting dates. So most of our costs are going to be incurred in the August, September, and then on and through the first part of 2022 for those street projects. With the next section, the facility improvements, I didn't feel like I had firm numbers yet to include that in a bond issuance. And there are also rules about the percentage of the bond issuance that you have to spend within so many months of the bond sale. So I think we're looking at two different bond issuances here.
And the 936-768 she put in there, that, that's some additional cost relating to the 1916 City Hall that we're not sure of yet, correct, Lacey?
Correct. I added that in just because I know there are a number of things that we had talked about that weren't in that original cost estimate. Like I said, I just don't feel like those numbers are firm enough to have an actual amount. And I don't think that we're quite ready for that piece yet.
And some of that was the communication tower, some of that exterior concrete and asphalt work on both sides of the building. And then if we do that kiosk for the customer service center, and if they do any kind of carport for the police cars or anything like that, we had talked about. Those things, we do not believe were included in that original estimate. And we just want to make sure there's adequate funds to complete the project.
Understand.
Let's see, the funds for the city comp plan, was that in Bond One or Two?
Probably Bond One.
Okay, I wrote it on the wrong one. Thanks.
That is if we're ready to move forward with that project.
Yeah.
It could be attached to either one of them if we're not quite ready.
I do have a question, in regards to streets, because that's the one that everybody seems to have a lot of concerns about, streets in their own particular neighborhood. What is our outlook as far as continuing to make improvements? We're looking at redoing just smaller sections, areas of streets throughout the, out the city. Do we still have, will we still have additional funding to set aside to work some of these really smaller projects? But added up, they, they could be, you know, $100,000, $150,000, $120,000.
Yes, I think that's our overall goal when we're looking at budget. You know, we've done it this year in 2021 and going forward in future years to have, you know, yes, have that, that pot of money that we can draw from for K-dot, you know, large matching projects, but also have annual funding for smaller projects throughout the city to where we're touching a number of streets.
There was a couple of, was it Fund 92 or Fund, can't think of the other funding number. One that we had some unused funds that we were using to help make improvements on streets. Was that, was that Fund 92 or a different fund?
I can't remember off the top of my head either.
But anyway, it was one of the others. Do we still have some existing funds in that?
We do. I can pull up the exact amount. I'm, I'm not sure off the top of my head. But we, we do have two, two funds that were previously established with bond proceeds that we have now. I know I did trace back the street one, and we have spent all of the bond proceeds out of that fund. And so now it's just, you know, like general fund cash or other funding sources that were put into that fund to then expend on the projects. So the bond monies have been spent, so there's, there's not the stipulations around the bond spending left on that. But we do have it reserved for street projects still, which was the original, the original intent of the bond. And then we have, we also have funds remaining in that ADA bond issuance in a, in a fund. I think that's Fund 72 maybe. But we do have funding available in both of those.
Okay, 72, you're right. That's right. Good memory.
Sometimes I get it.
The milling and overlay will come from special use or ad valorem property tax. We're going to use bonds for major street improvements of full base, curb and gutter, that type of work.
I will say that the Maple Street from 17th to 10th Street is a mill and overlay. That's the one with an estimated project cost of $405,000. And then the US 75 to City Limits project for $120,000 is also a mill and overlay. So we may take that off of the list for, for the bonds if you want to stick to the more full-depth replacement type projects.
Yeah, I, I think I, I see the Maple Street going either way, but yet with $405,000, it's something that has to be done at one time.
Yes, it's a big stretch.
So there you've got that question. The idea that an asphalt overlay, seven to 10 years is a life. That's why we really don't want to tie up...
Right.
20-year money in it, but yet due to the magnitude of that one, it's, it could go, go either way. But once we designate this as street improvement, if we can fund it from other sources, that still gives us the money that, we've talked about some alley replacements or some other portions of streets that are bad. We can still use that money in streets to...
Yes, we just need to make sure the bond language is such that we've, we've got some flexibility in our project scope. I know that you can always go back and amend the bond language to, for example, add a project. We did that last year. So it's not a hard process.
So with the quality of life, money being in Bond One and Central Park, I know we're, there's discussions of fundraisers, so it's conceivable that could reduce.
I have it listed as, you know, the fundraising or the rec commission payments towards that would just go towards the bond and interest. So the city would not, yes, the city makes the payment, but we would be reimbursed for that bond and interest payment. I would have to ask specifically if we, you know, if we were to fundraise. The issue with that project is it, it is happening really quickly. And so the likelihood of us getting all of that fundraising in prior to incurring the costs is probably not very likely. So you're looking at truly spending the bond proceeds on that. And then the payments that you get from those sources would just be put towards the bond and interest payments in the years to come.
Okay. I didn't know if it came up under budget, if that money, since it's listed in the street improvement as quality of life, would it have to be used for quality of life or could it transfer over to street?
Probably would have to stay within quality of life type projects, I would assume, if it came in under, under budget.
Okay, so as quality of life, since the swimming pool, for example, was funded under quality of life, and we've got major, if a major repair comes up, that gives us, and well, the same then, quality of life, we've got the library, Memorial Hall, and the pool. So any funds could come to supplement to, because these are getting some age on them.
Absolutely. That's what I would suggest.
Good.
Lacey, on the miscellaneous street, you might want to put miscellaneous street and alley. That's a good point, because we do have some downtown alleys that are really bad shape that get a lot of traffic.
And this is really rough and was originally just intended to be my notes that I'm, I'm sharing. So all of this will be buttoned up with a bond attorney and, you know, finance counsel and things like that, so.
Looks like a good start, though. Good job.
Thanks.
Yeah, it's not going to be, we'll have some leeway in some of these fundings. I mean, as far as like the, what we talked about, what Leonard mentioned earlier about the Central Park Sports Complex, about using it for other quality of life facilities that are fast coming upon needing some attention, so, so that's good.
So, so on this sheet, I also, you know, I did just a quick calculation of that statutory limitation of general obligation bond indebtedness. So based off of our 2021 assessed valuation, that, that limitation on, which, on the, the types of bonds that we don't actually currently have, would be that $14,121,000. But I noted on here that that's no regard for the certain exclusions that exist that most of our bonds fall under. But just to give you, you know, a data point of what that, that number would be. And with our current outstanding debt, we were at, as of January 1 of '21, we had the $5.9 million in, in bond, outstanding bonds, and that's bond and interest. And so our current percentage is that 13%.
And that's, that's about what they recommend, the 13%? Is there a percentage they recommend that cities fall within as far as that bond indebtedness?
I'm sure. I think they're just more concerned with going over 30% of that valuation.
Going over 30%, okay, okay.
Are there any questions so far?
If we were to bond out all $14 million of these projects, what would be the estimated increase in annual payments for that 20-year period?
I, I don't have that exact answer. We could, once we select a, you know, a financial advisor, we could ask them to go ahead and do that projection for us. What I have right now is based off of a, let's see, this, did I only send you the $1.2 million one? This looks like the refinancing one. Let me pull one up. I did one for, previously, that was, I believe, $5 million bond over a 10 and 20-year period. So I can pull up those, those amounts of what the annual bond and interest payments would be. But I don't have anything that shows what it would be if we did the entire $14 million now.
Indeed, and of course, interest rates are changing, and those kinds of things do impact the size of the payment. I was just, even if we just took $14 million and divided it by 20, which would give us equal principal payments, that would be about $700,000 a year, correct? Also, through, looking at the bond and interest schedule through 2023, we have only... uh, we have only a slight reduction in total, um, bond and interest. Uh, and then in twenty twenty-four, it goes down some. But an increase in seven hundred thousand dollars would actually be, e- even going out to 2024, it would be an increase for the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six timeframe of a, of about four hundred thousand dollars a year. So.
Correct.
We can structure these, I understand, so that we pay only interest in certain years and principal is paid in the out years and those kinds of things can be done to level our indebtedness out. But I would like that included in the analysis of the, uh, of the bonded debt when we see it, so that we can see whether we're actually creating a cash outflow or a cash cost increase, uh, in those, uh, in those near years.
I, I do know that last time I had, um, Greg is who helped me. Um, I did not have payments for these projects starting until 2023. And I, I think that that was when I, I anticipated that the completion of these projects would be in late 2022. And so it was reasonable to say we wouldn't start paying on the bonds until the projects were one hundred percent complete and our first payment would be in 2023. And then likewise for, if, for a second bond issuance, I, I would suggest again that that second bond issuance was pushed out payments until the project was completed. And so Commissioner Hayes, you, you would like to see basically this sheet with projected out, um, of the two bonds in whatever years we would start payments and what those payments would be?
Uh, correct.
Okay.
Correct. So that, um, what, uh, without any, um, adjustment of the annual, yeah, if you just amortize the entire amount and just pay equal sums each year, uh, there will be a spike at some point in time. Uh, that would be a possible problem. So I wouldn't want it to, I, I'm looking for that spike as opposed to some kind of a level or fairly level, um, total for bond and interest.
Okay.
Lacey, one question on the infrastructure bond, the 2016 A infrastructure bond. Was that impacted at all by the renegotiation, uh, of, uh, the school district's portion of that?
It was not.
Okay. I just see it ending in 2026. Was that the original date for that to end?
Yes, for our portion of that, yes.
Okay.
Um, and one thing I will note, um, I had inquired a couple of months ago about potentially doing another bond refinancing since interest rates are so low. Um, but with all of this discussion coming up on the projects in the near future, um, I was advised that it, it would save us money in issuance costs if we did a, you know, a refinancing in conjunction with this bond issuance. So that's something else that we would be taking a look at, um, on this first round.
Okay. That's a good idea.
Good.
The infrastructure bond, that was, uh, s- street and infrastructure relating to the new elementary school?
Correct.
And that's, let's see. So we're, we're, we're receiving money from ad valorem taxes to pay that or?
We have that one percent special, um, educational sales tax. And then of that, uh, we, we retain at the beginning of the year. We retain funds to pay our portion of that bond. And then once, once we have, um, retained the three hundred thousand, roughly, for those payments, then the rest of that one percent goes direct, well, goes straight to the school through us. So it's, it's through that one percent sales tax that the school has levied.
And if the bond is paid off early, the one percent goes to the school or is that recycled for?
It can be reutilized, um, once they pay off their portion, as long as it meets the definition of what the bond language was.
So it's still, would still have to go to infrastructure related improvements adjacent to the school facilities that were included in the bond?
Which would be around that thirteenth and Mulberry and the drainage issues around there, the drain from the school property and all of that.
It, it's tied to that region?
Yes.
Okay.
And is, and that is supposed to, uh, come to an end in, in the year 2028, is that correct?
Do you remember, is it twenty-six or twenty-eight?
I don't remember.
Twenty twenty-six on here.
Uh, yeah, I believe you're right, Mr. Mayor. Twenty twenty-eight was the renegotiated payoff for the school instead of twenty thirty-two.
Right, right. Four years earlier. Okay.
So our portion is just paid off prior.
Right. Gotcha.
That is really all I had prepared to, to discuss. I think next steps would be putting together a request for proposals for financial advisory services. And, and in that, you know, it would be a request for, for qualifications and, and proposals and, um, for those services. We would list in there, um, that, that Bond One plus refinancing and go forward from there. Um, there are also, there are a few different, once we select someone to work with, there are a few different assurances and things like that that we have to, um, I believe it's an ordinance, right, David, that we have to pass that allows them to, to look into this bond sale on our behalf? Does that ring a bell? I can pull it up. I'm, I'm pretty sure, um, from, from our last refinancing that that's what we had to do. So if, if you guys do have specific questions at that, at this point, I can ask Garth to, to join us by phone. Um, i- if we don't though, I, I don't, I also don't want to waste his time. I can, can converse with him. Any questions that pop up as we have time to digest this information. Um, but I, I would probably look to, to have a request for proposals in your next commission meeting, um, on the consent agenda and then put that out for, um, for proposals. And then come back at the following meeting, um, to discuss those and move forward with selecting a financial advisor.
I do have one question in regards to comments that Commissioner Koflic had made regarding the mill and overlay on the US Seventy Five to the City Limits and the mis- miscellaneous street, and we've added alley to that. Are you, um, indicating that you would like to see that portion of the dollar amount removed from Bond Number One due to just milling the street has a, a life expectancy of seven to ten years? Was that your intent or you were just bringing that up as a question?
I think in general practice, that's where it would be better to go with mill and overlay. I understand though, why you put it here because of the, uh, the ability to get it done quickly. And that's a section of, of street that gets a lot of traffic and the, the main, well, I remember a conversation that was overheard at one of the local restaurants by some people coming into town prior to our major Main Street Improvement Project. And they commented on the condition and it, the way it reflected on our community was very negative. That's what they brought out. So I think in the case, the way you've got it outlined as a mill and over- overlay in this case, if we can fund it elsewhere, that's fine. But in case something happens, we need to, we need to keep our entrance highways in excellent condition. And this expedites that condition. So, you know, if this was a mill and overlay on Park Boulevard or another side street, I would say, are we really wanting to do that? But in the case of, of this one, I think it puts it up in a priority that if something came up and we couldn't do it immediately, I'd hate to take the money out and, and have that problem.
This one is funded. It, it is funded already. At least the, um, the, the Seventy Five to City Limits. Um, you know, we, we could very easily take that one out of this. I, I would maybe want to consult with the, the financial advisor to see if we should still put that into a miscellaneous, um, you know, streets and alley or, or something like that, to have those funds available for design services. Um, so that, design or construction services, so that we've got it available to do some of these larger projects and, and get more accomplished while we're at it.
Indeed. And as we are, as we are milling and overlaying, uh, which is more in the seven to ten year timeframe, we are touching portions of the street, including ADA and utility repairs and, uh, and those types of portions of those mill and overlay projects which have, uh, longer life turn, life cycles. And so if we could segregate those longer life cycle portions of those projects and fund them with the bond money, that will give us more money to go into the mill and overlay in, uh, in the near term. So I, I see, uh, I see mill and overlay much the same way as you see it, as that is something that we need to have in this year's budget for this year's mill and overlay. However, the, uh, things like ADA, the concrete work, the storm sewer work, the utility work that we do that supports that or is part of that, i- is really projected to last much, much longer than the mill and overlay itself. So. Uh, it can be segregated and funded with bonds for twenty year money.
Do you feel that, um, so you know, total, the, the street funding is just under, it's at two point four four million? Would you like to see that larger? Or do you want to keep the, the anticipated total bond amount at the seven million dollars? Do you, do you like this breakup?
I'd like, I'd like the breakout, the way, breakout the way it is.
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
No, I, I would just wanted to clarify and make sure I, I understood what, what we were leading to on this, that. I don't have a problem with, I just want to make sure I understood.
Okay.
What was going on or no. I, I don't at all. I think that's good. And, and, um, when we all leave, Kelly, I need to talk to you about something in regards to, to that also. I just, I thought of earlier today. So no, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Do you guys feel like we need to talk to Garth at this point? Or, um, I'm happy to just, you know, get started on, on the request for proposals. And if we have questions, I can share, you know, I can get a general overview of the process and share that with you at the next commission meeting.
We're really just talking about Bond Number One right now?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, the, the information that Commissioner Hayes has requested, yeah.
Okay.
We'd, we'd like to see that.
That, that would come with, once we've selected someone, um, that would be part of, of their deliverables would be that conversation with us and projecting, projecting out those potential bond issuances. Um, I will probably write it in such a way that we select the same advisor for, for both issuances, if that is okay with you guys. That it's for currently this first one, um, but then within, however, you know, a year, a year and a half or something like that, a second issuance.
And it's likely the first one would also include some conversation about refinancing occurring.
Yes, that will definitely be in the first one.
In the first.
Yeah.
So what we would do, we're looking at, uh, assistance for both.
Yes.
Not expediting, but going ahead, uh, first with the refinancing and issuing Bond One, then as cost gets defined for Bond Two, with the construction manager at risk, then look at issuance of Bond Number Two.
Correct.
Working with the same advisor and everything.
Yes.
Yeah.
Indeed. And that, of course, we're also talking about aggressive marketing of, of the, um, Temporary City Hall, Building D. And so that could also play into the size of the second bond.
Yes. Yep.
And just to reiterate that Vance is going through a checklist of some items to see what was actually included.
Yes.
In this phase two and what hasn't been addressed.
Early this morning, he was going to verify that. He, he has not reached back out to me yet. I think he was going to get with Chris, who did the design with us and see what was and what was not included.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Kelly.
Okay. That's all I have.
We have one other question. It is relating to financing of upcoming projects. When we're in the middle of a project and we have a change order that comes up that maybe based on when the meetings are, uh, it could create an issue with slowing the project down. Is there a dollar amount that you would be comfortable that we could approve those change orders internally and then just report to you at the next commission meeting? Or do you want all change orders brought to you, um, regardless?
I think it would depend on the type of project more than.
Dollar amount.
Yeah.
We just need some direction. So like on a FAA project, they pay for ninety percent and they're out there and they run into something and they need to do, they need approval for a change order because of, of a condition they weren't aware of and they're mobilized and everything. And maybe on that one, they said there's, it could be a five hundred dollar city share because the FAA is paying for the other part. Or it could be, you know, more depending on the, the situation. And we just wondered if there was maybe some guidance you can give, give us when we run into those situations on how you would like us to handle those.
I think one thing that would help is, uh, and now with, uh, with John, is to develop, uh, a procedure or submittal package of what the contractor furnishes. So, you know, we'll, we'll know what we're getting more in, in detail on. Some of the projects, uh, in the past, the consultants have presented us little information. And then once we start questioning, we find out that we've been able to save considerable amount of money from what the, the contractor projected and what was presented with the consultant. I think the last change order we had at, uh, nineteen sixteen City Hall is an example of how we were able to save money just by that review. So I understand, like in, in that, if you're hitting an excavation and you find a, a base that's, that's bad, you need to go ahead and get that resolved. And with the information that's outlined, that for every change order, construction wise, we have, this is our submittals that we want to come in to be reviewed. I think we can expedite that a lot better. But if a change order of electronics changing those in a component you find out is not compliant, that you need to, to change.
And we've had projects where we think we're going to use one type of equipment and then it's not available and we have to change to a different type of equipment and that kind of thing too.
Yeah. And, and some of those cases, I think if the equipment's not available, you know, as long as you're getting, making sure you're getting equal or better, the change of brands wouldn't, I don't think, I, I would need to see it, but when you're getting more change of scope, a change of, of a major direction, those type, but, uh...
We're working on updating the procurement policy, so it would be good to understand what your expectations are, so we can include that when we revise that.
I believe that the procurement policy currently says changes of scope and things like that. Um, otherwise, we would not be bringing all of these change orders to the commission. But I believe it was specifically requested by this commission to go ahead and bring all of them, even though the procurement policy does not dictate that.
What if we look at? Well, what if we look at, at changing it to different types of, of work? So that if we're dealing with, with, uh, like we've had construction issues divided up, if it's dealing with services, have a procedure?
I, I mean, I, I would just want to know what the benefit of doing it that way would be. It seems like that would be a lot more of an administrative burden. Um, but as long as we understood.
I would, I would guess that, that somewhere in the realm of nominal, the definition of something nominal, we can come up with a number that can, we can give you guys that would give you some leeway.
Or a percentage of total project cost or percentage of city share, you know, if it rises to, you know, if it's, if it's a change order that's twenty percent of the project cost, well, sure, we're going to come bring it to you guys. Um, things, things like that.
I'm open to considering what nomi- what definition of nominal that you want to, uh, put forward. And then we can, uh, say, you know, anything below that value is, uh, is within your scope to consider.
Yeah, because the percentages, you've got so many projects that range in such big differences as far as.
Right.
A twenty percent could be a big difference. It could be five hundred dollars or.
It absolutely could be.
Or a hundred thousand dollars or more, a million dollars.
Strict of it, the leeway to where it's workable. Without, um, I guess, kind of walking a fine line there, but, you know, where changes in scope or direction, definitely, you know, that needs to come back to here. And there's other examples that we've already, you've already talked about where you really need an answer, like we need to make a decision now. Because we're doing the work and, and they've hit this, and we need to move forward with it, and we're just.
And sometimes if you can't answer those things right away, it's going to cost us more money.
Right, right. So it's, all depends on the circumstance.
Down the progress. So we just want to make sure that, that we're following the direction that you want us to do. But we also want to make sure that we keep our projects moving forward.
Sure.
So we have a lot of them.
Delay costs money also, too, so. Okay. Do you have any more questions or comments?
I'm good.
Good.
I'm good. Then at that point, uh, we have no more questions. It's time to, I call for an adjournment of this special session. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Kelly, I, I do have a question.
Okay.